Everybody can be seated, we'll get started with our workshop. One thing I want to say before we get started, obviously, I'm not Ted Rumley, I have more hair, and he's better looking, but in all seriousness, Ted is not with us, as you know, if you attended our meetings or watched yesterday, would not able to be with us in our two public hearings concerning the military.
... yesterday because of his mother's illness, and so he again is not able to be here tonight. I do ask you to continue to pray for the family, pray for his mother, she's...I don't have any other report that I can give other than that right now, but that is the reason that he's not here, therefore, as vice chair, I will be conducting this, and I'm not...just be honest with you, I went to Davis, he went to Dade, and he's a little swifter on it than I am because he does it every week, or every month, but we will get started here. And to the commissioners now, first item is the approval of the agenda, and we've all had it for several days, any additions, do we need to amend anything, or anybody, everybody good with it?
Do you want to add that?
I'm good with it.
All right, put that on the consent agenda. Approval of previous minutes, we have them, have been sent to us via email, does anybody have any additions, anything, any corrections or anything to make to the minutes of the last meeting? Hearing none, we'll put that on the consent agenda. The third thing then is our, looking at our status report, employee status report, everybody's got that before you. And one thing we will ask you to do, we're trying a brand new thing, this is our second month on it, so we're trying to keep up, rather than flipping pages in a notebook, we're flipping pages on a workbook, so any questions on that? All right, put that on consent agenda, there's no questions. Okay, board appointments and proclamations. We have an appointment to the water well, getting a little bit ahead of myself, we have a proclamation for Purple Heart Day at the American Legion Post here in Trenton 106. Is anyone here from the American Legion that wanted to say a word about that, if you like?
I don't know really, I know nothing about it, Ted.
Then that makes me...
I belong to it, I've served about years.
Well, obviously, you haven't talked to Gary Bell, but this is a proclamation for Purple Heart Day, August 7th, 2021, and this, it says that Dade County has a Purple Heart County and recognize August 7th, 2021 as Purple Heart Day. In Dade County, in conjunction with the American Legion Post 106, honoring our soldiers', soldier's service and sacrifice to our nation's men and women in uniform who wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans, and we urge all citizens to observe this day in honor and remembrance with the appropriate ceremonies and activities resolved this day, fifth day of August 20 and 21. And I don't know, we may have other...how many veterans are here? Could you stand just a moment and thank y'all for what you did? And if you, I had a brother who was a Vietnam veteran, if you were a Vietnam veteran, welcome home. We also have an appointment for the Water Authority, for the resignation of H.A. McKeg, H.A. went to work with our, he is now our deputy magistrate, I guess is the title, so he had to resign, and we've been a long time trying to find somebody, and it is District 4, and we try to stay within the district, so if anybody hears from Lookout Mountain and you're interested, or you know somebody that might be serving on the Water Authority, then please get with Melissa, because that's her district, and we'll try to get somebody. It's been quite a while now, he's been gone, but H.A.'s been gone, we just haven't been able to find anybody, so if you're watching this and you live on Lookout Mountain or anywhere in District 4, Canyon Park Estates, in that area, then call someone here at the office or get with Melissa out there, okay? Approval of splash or capital equipment, if any.
We don't have any.
We don't have any? We do have some splash, we just don't have...okay. We have number six is the ordinance, amending parades and special events. We have that before us.
We, on that, you know, we talked about it last meeting, we've all sat down and talked about it, and we're working on coming up with an ordinance right now, but I feel that we should table this till next month's meeting, till we can get the wording like we want it.
So we have a motion to table, do I have a second?
We can't take a vote, we just gotta...
Well, unless there's some disagreement, we'll just go ahead and move it to consent agenda, okay?
Isaiah, you may have any...
I have a question, so if we do this, and we rewrite the wording, then how, how does that follow, is that two more?
No, just one more, unless we're, it's a completely different sort of ordinance, but we can tweak it, I mean, that's the purpose of having two readings, really.
Okay.
To allow us to do that. Now, Mr. Terrence, I understand there's someone that wanted to speak on this, you want to hear them now, or do you want to wait till later?
Well, I told them we could get them, we could work them in here, they want to come, Mr. Nate McDaniel, they're from Valley Vibes, and he has something he'd like to say to us, since this does deal with them directly, and he said it would only be a few minutes, so if you'll come...
Yeah, I don't take too much of your time, I appreciate y'all taking a minute. To give me, I only have three copies of this, my printer ran out of ink, but here you go.
And Melissa can change.
Where we stand to this point.
We'll make some copies of it.
Yeah, no problem.
So I know the main concern, primarily, there's so many concerns, but the main concern has been the traffic flow in and out of that property, so after speaking with the property owner, he's agreed to clear an exit, it's in progress, he has an easement to Hallam Lane, which adjoins that property, so we'll have an entrance point and an exit point will flow one way through that, that's outlined in this paperwork, along with a state level permit from GDOT for variable message boards, those will be placed before Hallam Lane and before Doyle Lane, northbound and southbound respectively, and those will, in the week prior, warn folks, hey, expect delays during these dates, and during the event, it'll warn them to slow down. I've been speaking with Sheriff Ray Cross and Lieutenant Hughes about getting deputies out there near the railroad tracks, that's a stipulation from Norfolk Southern, they've agreed to slow train traffic for that weekend, so that's a big plus. We're trying to cover all our bases here, so there's no concern for public safety, so I left my card on those, you're more than welcome to take a look at that, and if you guys have any questions or concerns, I'll be available to address those.
Okay, so you did, you have met with the railroad, my understanding?
Correct.
And with Sheriff Cross, also GDOT, and you worked the, and you have the agreement to put an emergency exit out at Hallam Lane?
Correct.
Somehow or another, and that would only be used for emergencies, is that correct?
So it would be outflow of that, to an extent.
Took the beats off.
Yes. You have a saying about that?
Sure, we have tabled the, we've tabled the ordinance and the amend in the ordinance, and he's trying to, I don't, if you have a question, you can ask a question.
I don't mind, I own the, we live on Hallam Lane.
Yes, sir.
And it's a private road, nobody's come to us and asked us to finish it, okay?
Okay.
You get that straight now.
The property owner assured me that he has an easement to the...
Where's the property owner?
The property owner of Bellicera, the property off Doyle Lane, that we're hosting the event at.
We are the property owner.
Yeah, on Hallam Lane. Yes, correct.
Nobody's come to say this.
Okay, well, we can have a discussion afterwards.
We will have a discussion.
Okay, of course.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, in terms of medical personnel, we'll have an EMT on site the whole time, as well as a registered nurse, security's handled by US veterans and actual security personnel that work at, like, Walden Security, so these people aren't, you know, they're not new to these, this type of thing, so.
And I would like to say, you know, we're kind of to this point where we haven't had this situation before, I feel like it's kind of gotten to where it's, they're trying to butt heads on, and I don't want it to be that way, it's kind, unfortunately, you guys are kind of like a guinea pig, because this is, this sort of thing has not happened here, and I appreciate that you're trying to do it correctly, in the right way, and keeping everybody safe, and that's what, what I want to see done, I don't want you to feel that we're trying to...
Yeah, I spoke, I spoke to many of you, so, and you know, you reassured me, they're not trying to stop us from doing this, you know, I think you get where our hearts at, and yeah, we're gonna try to do everything we can to make sure we're doing it by the book, so I don't want y'all to think we're just having some big party in the woods, you know, that's, you know, unregulated, so.
Well, that, I mean, that's okay too, but, and with this, with the ordinances, which I think has got mis-screwed somehow, is that it's, you know, that we're trying to tell you not to do something, and that's not the case, it's, it's kind of more of a checklist, you know, all these things you obviously had to go through, you know, in the future, that's what we're, we're trying to look ahead to make sure that everybody has that checklist done correctly, and we're doing our job to.
I'm sure, I'm sure you've done your due diligence, I would say Walker County has a good model for the special event use permits.
That's one we're looking at.
It was, it was very, it was very clear cut for us last year, I think we spent, like, maybe $500 in total to get all the proper permits and stuff for it, and their county that's done large events, they do them regularly, so they have that Honeybee Fest and a bunch of stuff like that, so, I don't know, I'm sure y'all have already looked at it, but I would encourage you to.
Yes.
If you haven't already.
I have researched North Georgia ordinance for several weeks now, so.
And after we met at the railroad, you and Ted and Alex and the sheriff, Cross and David Hughes, Lieutenant Hughes, we could tell y'all wanting to do it right, I mean, so we're wanting to help do it right, so we're all, we're on the same page.
And I realize the property itself is really, offers up the most, you know, issues of any property we could have chosen, I feel like, but we're doing what we can, so I hope y'all know that, and I'm always open to any questions, if you have a call, if you need to call me, text me, email.
And please understand, as Melissa said, we're trying to get it, whatever we do, we're trying to get it right too, with the people of Dade County, safety in mind, it's not, you know, we get, to be very well honest with you, we've been beat up with emails and that kind of thing, but our concern is the safety, not only for the citizens of Dade County, but back, when, when you're back there with a number of people, and being able to reach you with an ambulance or sheriffs, you know, whatever, we need to get back there, that we can do it, and that's why we're doing the due diligence on this.
And luckily, luckily, you know, our board members are all from here, so they, we know some folks, my stepdad's gonna be the EMT on site, and he's, he's about to start working for Puckett, which I think is the county provider, so...
They work...
Oh, okay, so he's moving to Memorial or something?
But Puckett was up until a few months ago.
Well, I imagine he'll be privy to some information, he can act as a liaison if we need, we need to.
Sure.
Any questions, concerns, happy to answer anything.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate y'all.
Thank you for coming.
Well, mainly, the festival actually in Dade County that they used to have up on top of the mountain.
It is Dade, isn't it? It is, yes.
Yeah, I heard they had it for years and years, you know, I, I'm not as familiar with it as maybe some of y'all would be, but I just, I didn't know in the aspect of how that was handled in the past, you know, and stuff, and they said it got pretty big there for a while.
It has, and as Mr. McDaniel just said, a lot of this stems from the railroad crossing, the narrow road, pulling in and out on a kind of a blind side if you're going nowhere, with the, you know, a lot of traffic in and out, and so it is a different, and that's the reason that we're looking, because everything is, you know, some things are done in a church parking lot or a backyard, they're not done where you're, you know, impeding the services, and if other people should live there, that, you know, they may have a dialysis patient or a heart patient living.
That festival is on 136, right on 136, at Disney intersection, you know, 136 is very busy, especially with all of those now 18-wheelers flying, flying across the mountain. Nobody notices this, we never see any sheriffs or anyone up there, there are constant accidents, as was witnessed the other day, on the mountain, constant, we are constantly kept from driving off the mountain, so there is, there is an issue up there. What we're concerned about is that you will use this platform to take away more and more and more of our rights, and we want this stopped now, we want a moratorium on all of your ordinances until the election is audited, everything, everything.
Well, this is not the time for, I mean, it is the time for, you know, we gave, we gave them a...
You, you need to stop every ordinance, every discussion that you're having until the election is forensically audited, because we know that there are several people who have cheated in this election in this county. The dead person that voted could have, should have nullified the election for the entire United States. Something needs to stop now.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, that was tabled, it'll be on the consent agenda to be tabled, that ordinance at this time. Melissa, would you like to speak, number seven, to the, I know we don't have anything on it yet, but if you want to do it, are you on the table?
Yeah, we have been talking, Patty and I have been researching, looking at venues, small venues, larger venues, just every, every aspect of how this, how this needs to go, and we have come up with hopefully a solution that we're going to take before Robin, and see how it plays out legally, so it's, it's a much bigger, bigger...
Legally, if you...
Yeah, than just, just writing something down and...
Okay, so you have something maybe for the next meeting?
I'm hoping so, yes.
All right, but do you...
Will that one take two readings, stay robbing, or will it...
It would take two readings, so if they want to bring it up, I think we've got three meetings, and I'll just bring up one ten, we can work that, work that through, I understand your concerns.
All right, and they're, they're really kind of needing that.
Yeah.
So we're, and as we're tabling that right now, because we don't have anything on it.
And with that, with that said, with Valley Vibes, it's, you know, we've discussed that it's, unfortunately, they're, they're kind of a test, test run, so things may go a certain way with them, that this could be, when it all plans out, it'll be a little bit different, so we're trying to, we're trying to get everything together as much as we can to get things going for them, too.
So Nate, that, the festival is September the 2nd?
Third through the 5th. Third through the 5th. I am working with a brewer currently, so I'm holding off until I know something, obviously, but they would bring out licensed folks to come forward and stuff.
Okay, well, with that, that would depend on, that's a problem that we, we do, we don't have, so when you say licensed, that, nobody could come into the county right now other than Jeffersons that are actually licensed.
They need the county, okay.
Yes, so that, that's one of, that's another thing that we're, we're trying to hammer out, along with, with not having an ordinance for that situation, so...
But we're going to try to get it in done in time.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, if you need anything from me, I'm happy to help.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Resolution R 23-21, to amend the fiscal year budget, Don.
Yes, this is part of last year's amendments that we're still going through, and we will have one more in September, at latest October, or probably September, to finalize the fiscal year 2021 budget, we're currently in the FY 22 budget, and it is customary to bring these revised budget summaries to the board for approval, and you can see that what's changing here, the, the overall change is a zero change, we have $540,000 in revenue, which was reflected from, mostly from grant funds, as you see at the top, there with FEMA state grant, LMEG grant, the FEMA was 190,000, FEMA was, I'm sorry, LMEG, which is the local maintenance improvement grant for, from the Georgia Department of Transportation, was 145,000, and then additional ad valorem taxes that came in, motor vehicle for 95,000, intangible tax, 55,000, commissions and vouchers, 30,000, and recording fees, 25,000, so those tallied at 540,000, and the offset to that is in FEMA capital improvements for 316,000 emergency management, and also the FEMA shelters, an increase of 224,000.
So it's just showing where the money is going, where it's from, and that it is going into the account, right?
Right, and this is for, again, for last year's budget, but we have to start cleaning those things up, that as these revenues start coming back in, their accounts receivable for last year is what it is, and so we're, we're trying to clean up the different departments in preparation for the annual audit.
All right, any questions? All right, we'll put that on the consent agenda. Number nine, the construction management service for the whole courthouse.
And so the Historic Preservation Commission has been meeting, of course, they meet monthly, and we've met with Jamie Blevins, James Blevins, I should say, is his...
We call him Jamie, I'm sure.
Jamie is what we call him, yeah, right. Jamie Blevins here at this meeting, what, maybe three months ago or so, and since then, we've met with him twice, with the HPC meeting, and then even his latest, a couple of weeks ago, there's, we're still working out details as to, you know, what do we want him to do, is it just construction consulting, is it construction management, is it, you know, how fast is the project wanted, do you want the project to move, there's different things that he's proposing, so I would recommend, especially since Chairman Rumley was not here, that you table this issue tonight, and then just take this information, basically 81 pages of information, now, a lot of this is just contract, standard contract languages, you know, but I copied his email on top, it gives a summary of what he's proposing, and just take a look at that, and...
He'd work with the architect?
Yeah, he's already spoken with it.
Who brings that way in?
Yeah, he spoke with the architect, Bruce Kays, and so they've met, and they went, reviewed those plans, and so he's just wanting to start figuring out from the commission's standpoint, what do you want to, him to do, what, what's the goal, and so if you have an opportunity to speak with him directly, feel free to, or we can ask him back to a meeting, probably maybe in September.
Do you recommend tableing?
I do, yeah.
If anybody wants to come to the next Historic Preservation Committee meeting?
Yeah.
They've been furthered this...
What day is that? It's the third Wednesday.
Third Wednesday, right here in this room?
Yeah.
All right, number 10?
Which would be the 18th.
Resolution R-25-21, agreement with the Alliance for Dade Incorporated, also known as the Chamber of Commerce.
Would you like them to come up and kind of talk about the agreement?
I think it would be beneficial, yeah.
George and Marcy, or George, or whoever?
We've worked with William Back and hammered out a, hopefully we've hammered out an agreement for the funding that we have been, we requested and not quite been granted yet based on the contract, I'm here to say that there's many items under the chamber's obligation, there's several of them, and many of those we already have in place, but there's a couple that we need to work on, so they're not all quite there yet, so we're, we're in agreement, we, the Alliance for Dade Chamber of Commerce is in agreement with this contract and are willing to sign it, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I just got, we appreciate everything y'all have been doing, it's turned our chamber from something that was dead and gone to back alive, and enthusiastic people are really working hard toward it.
Thank you.
It's good for the county, and I know y'all put a lot of personal time into it.
Yeah.
You and the other members.
Yeah, we have a lot of good volunteers, so, and we, we did discuss this at our board meeting earlier this week, we had one on Tuesday night, and our board's in agreement with executing this agreement.
If anybody hasn't seen, the chamber is right on the other side of the courthouse square, it's really nice, so take time to go by there.
Yeah, we're working out of the welcome center, so...
Yeah, it's where we're welcomed, you know, that thing, yeah.
This is an older contract that was from 2017, I think that Robin had proposed, I mean, this was the last active contract, okay, so they were provided this contract, William Back assisted them, and just going through and updating it, you know, if you need more time to review it, again, I wish Chairman Rumley was here, I don't know where he stands on the issue, but it's pretty straightforward, but we have budgeted $10,000 for the chamber, which is already in effect, I mean, that is, that is there, but I told them originally, you know, even though it's budgeted, we still have to have an agreement in place in order to execute payment, you know, with anyone really, especially a third party or not-for-profit, so I don't know if you want to consider it, or table it, or what you want to do.
I'm good with it, I'm making motion that we put it on the consent agenda.
I'm good with it, too.
Yeah, I think Ted is too, from, I haven't heard anything negative from, from him.
All right, we'll put that on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 11 is a handbook, personnel handbook policy that I think we need to look at much more, as well as the number 12, also a personnel problem with a handbook, as you see, it's a return to work and a dealing with sick leave bank, so I, I think that we look at them more and talk about them, it would be in our interest to...
Table?
Table these.
Okay.
Both number 11 and 12, they deal with employees and handbook, unless there's, I mean, if everybody's okay with it.
No, I agree, that needs to happen.
That'll go tabled, Rebecca. Let's see, and what we have to deal with here, number 13, Resolution R 28-21, and it is the Title VI Plan for Public Transportation, which is one of those reoccurring things that we do, I think, every year, is that correct, Don?
We do it every three years.
Three years.
And very little has changed, in fact, I'm not aware of any material changes in this from the last time we adopted it, we just updated the dates and actually, updated the dates before we put it online, but it's actually July, July 8th on the very front copy here is actually today's date, so that's the only change I'm aware of.
Any questions? I'm just thankful we have that, because a lot of people need it. No questions, we'll put that on the consent agenda, Rebecca.
Tell them what that is, they might realize what title that is, I got the senior business in the...
It's the, I can read the resolve, the above recitals are incorporated reference into one body of residence... one body of the resolution, such as adopted finding of fact, that makes the Board of Commissioners Dade County, Georgia approves 2021 Dade County Title VI Plan for Transit Operations as presented. To the extent that there are typographical administrative areas that do not change the tenor, the tone, the concept of the resolution, the resolution may be revised without subsequent approval from the Board of Commissioners. But this is something, it has to do with the public transit through our, I guess most people would call it, part of the senior citizens building, and we do have some, that is both federal, state, federal, state and local dollars as far as that goes, but this is not, this is dealing with the wording and the continue on, is that correct?
Well, what it, yeah, and it provides for a complaint procedure on a federal program level, because it's coming, there's FTA money, Federal Transit Authority money coming down to the state government, and the state government, GDOT, has been funneling it on down to here. So because of that, we have to comply with certain federal regulations, and one of those is to have a Title VI plan in place for non-discrimination policy statement and just a commitment on the management side to address any kind of complaints that come before, you know, from the general public or anyone else, really. And then there's, it talks about record retention, and it talks, you know, how do you do that? And you deal with subcontractors or you don't, and investigations, and that's what it's about. And it very, very rarely changes, but it is a plan that we have to adopt in order to maintain public transit in Dade County.
Everybody good with it?
Yes, sir.
Good with it. Consent agenda. Next, we just have notice of public hearings. Do want to mention, it's quite often, we have always heard throughout the years that we never plan for anything. In reality, we have no choice but to plan. Every five years, and this is the update of the Joint Comprehensive Plan that we do every five years, it's just hard to believe that it's five years has gone by since our last one. We will be having a meeting, meetings, it will go on, it can go on for several meetings. It will. This can be attended by businesses, it can be attended by citizens regardless. It can be, the last one I remember coming to, we had a minister from one of the churches here in the county that came, and that was five years ago, so my memory's, but it, the, to give you an idea of what this is, it's where ideas come from, from the citizenry of, let's say, walking trails. I think one thing that's been brought up several times is a sidewalk from Larry Moore's funeral home beyond the high school, things like that, that people want to see the county do. And I said this, I guess, yesterday, the greatest plans still require money when it's all said and done and how to get it. But this is through the Department of Community Affairs, and that's where grant money and that kind of thing comes from, that rolls down to the counties, whether it's for infrastructure projects, walking trails, I mean, it can be a variety of things that the citizens say, I'd like to see this in Dade County. It's not a promise you're going to get it, but it is a plan taking everybody's ideas in, is that-
That's right.
And so they're held here, and they are notice of when they're going to be, and everybody, I want you to know you're in this room, you're watching on TV, you are welcome to come to those meetings. It's not for the commission, it is for the commissioner as a citizen, but also for any other citizen, business owner, school system, it doesn't matter what. So that is just for information that it will be, it will be done, and that's, that's how we plan, and we've always, it's always been that way.
It also allows us to remain a qualified local government, which is a requirement to receive grant funds in the state of Georgia. So again, that will be held here on the 19th of, I'm trying to find the date on here, I got so many dates on here, August 19th, yeah, at 5:00 PM. And it also is considered a joint comprehensive plan with the city of Trenton. So many counties and cities work together on these, and we do as well, partner with the city very well with them. So it's public hearing notice officially given here for Thursday, August 19th at 5:00 PM. And it's just the beginning. We'll need to form stakeholders, so if you are a stakeholder in the community, you want to be considered a stakeholder, we would love to have you serve.
All right. I've attended these before, it's really, it's really a neat way of doing things. A lot of times they'll put groups of people in the room, and they'll have their paper boards to write on. This group will write down, this is what we'd like to see come to Dade County, that group would be doing it, and another group would be doing, then you put them all together, and if there's three or four of the same thing that people are wanting, that's what we would concentrate on, so it's, it's really a good deal.
There's a 10-year, a 20-year, and a five-year. This is just our five-year update, so it, it's not extensive, but it, it matters and it's required.
Well, it gives a chance to add to, you know, to make, you know, what, what might have changed in the, in the last five years that people would like to see added to it. And the most important thing to reiterate over and over, it is for everyone in this county that wants to attend to come and, and listen, it will be handled by the Department of Community Affairs, they will send people up to do it, so keep that in mind. Going to our next one is a special notice of call meeting, consider adoption of the 2021 millage rate. It is, I'll just read it, there may be, if anyone has a question, a special call meeting is hereby announced by Dade County Board of Commissioners to be held on Monday, August the 16th, at 2021, at 6:30 PM, here in this room, public meeting room located Dade County Administrative Building, 71 Case Avenue, to consider for adoption the 2021 millage rate for the unincorporated and incorporated areas of Dade County, Georgia. The three public hearings that have taken place was August the 4th, which was yesterday, we held two meetings, one at 11:00 AM and the other at 6:00 PM, and there is one to be held August the 12th at 6:00 PM, right here, and that'll be the third mandatory meeting for that. So if you want to come to that, that will be the last meeting before the meeting to adopt. All right? And I think that's, everything just, wasn't anything else added, was there? I'd like to maybe ask Robin a question before we close out. Okay. Is this the proper time to go ahead and add amending that alcohol ordinance to these, these two meetings that we're going to be having?
Yeah, we can add that to the agenda whenever, I mean, we don't have to formally do it tonight, but whenever the notice of the meetings come out, we can do it.
Because some of these have been, well, the 16th and the 19th haven't come out yet.
Or-
Or the 12th, it's up to y'all.
Or another one.
That's right.
I just, I know they're waiting to get an answer, so I'd like to help them if we could.
Well, that's what Patty and I have been meeting about, and we're hoping to get all that kind of more down on paper, probably the first of the week. So we, we've, we've worked out, I think, a pretty good plan, so I would like everybody to-
Look it over.
Look it over and make sure that that's the right way to go.
So it can be done later, it doesn't have to be official, and that. Okay, that concludes our workshop agenda. We do have one very special announcement that Mr. Evan Stone wants to make concerning something taking place this Monday, coming Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is more of an invite and information for those of you that may have been at the Alliance for Dade Luncheon Learn today, you already know, but Monday morning at 11 o'clock, the commission and everyone here is invited, they're going to be naming the intersection of Highway 299 and Highway 11 as the Philip Street Memorial Intersection on the north end of the county. This was put through, through state legislation, because it's state highway, the Philip's family, of course, for anybody here who don't know, Philip was our sheriff for 20 years and, and unfortunately passed away, locked Mr. Bradford with COVID, and this is going to be, there'll be signage put up, and so there's going to be a service, a memorial type of unveiling, the family is coming. They picked the date and also picked the area, you may ask why 29911, of course, those of us that grew up around here knew that Philip, and his mother still lives on the north end, but he grew up on the north end, went to Wildwood School, and, you know, so that's the reason that intersection is being, has been chosen. It was signed Senator Mullis and Representative Cameron, put it through legislation this year, and the governor signed it on July 1st, and this was the time to do it, on the night. So if there's anybody here that wants to come, they're, the sheriff, Sheriff Cross has got permission from the Seventh-day Adventist Church there, where their building is, right off the road, parking lot, everybody can park there, and they're, they're going to be able to bus everybody over to the intersection where we don't have cars going up down the road on both sides, as many, now, there's going to be a lot of law enforcement there, Georgia State Patrol's coming, TDOT's going to be there, of course, they're unveiling the signs, and so there'll be a ceremony there at 11 o'clock, and of course, all of y'all are invited, and everybody here is invited, too. Any other questions?
This, this coming Monday, 11 o'clock-
Monday, August 99.
At 11:00 AM, Highway 299 and Highway 11. One question I got today from the meeting, some people don't know where the Seventh-day Adventist Church is, so if you turn left on 299, the first turn on the right, you'll see the church and the parking lot.
Yeah, so Wildwood-
Lifestyle.
Lifestyle Center, thank you. Wildwood Lifestyle Center, and they've got a really nice parking lot down there, and they've, the sheriff called and asked if they'd mind everybody parking there, and they graciously agreed, yes, that would be great, and that'll keep everybody from just parking on the side of the road. Monday morning, 11:00 AM.
Thank you, Evan. All right, that concludes our work, work session, and we'll take about a five, six-minute break, and we'll come back to our regular commission, monthly commission meeting. Thank you for being here tonight, staying with the workshop, and for the regular meeting at the, this is the regular meeting, Dade County Board of Commissioners, hereby call the order, and we will, as usual, I will ask Don Hounden, who will our clerk, if he will lead us in prayer and the pledge allegiance.
May we bow. Our heavenly Father, Lord, we're so thankful for this day that you've made for us, and thankful, Lord, that you allow us to live here in a beautiful community, beautiful people, and we're, we have many things on our mind and our hearts today with Mrs. B. Rumpley, she's in, we know, critical shape, and the family's there with her at this time, but we pray, Lord, that you would just be with them and bring peace and comfort to the family during this time, also with the many other folks that have been sick and suffering. Sherry, who's, we all know about, our receptionist, we pray, Lord, that you would be with her, she's still in the hospital, and pray that you just watch over her and heal her body completely, Lord, and the many other people in Dade County that are facing tragedy or where the death angels visit, we just pray for them at this time, that you would be with them and give them peace and comfort. Pray that you go with the commissioners, be with them as they consider the business of this county, and pray that you guide them and direct their paths as, as your will, as you will, Lord, and we pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America-
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Don. All right, this is the regularly scheduled meeting, the Dade County Board of Commissioners, which takes place at the same time on the first Thursday of every month. Proper notice was given in the legal organ of Dade County, and it's been posted in the Hawley Administrative Building at this time, call the roll and have the clerk check. Mr. Lowery?
Here.
Mr. Hartline?
Here.
Ms. Bradford?
Here.
The chairperson, Rumpley, is absent, vice chair is here, so we do have a quorum. All right. Then we'll have our district commissioner report, Mr. Lowery, would you like to begin?
Starting with our caller, 911 call statistic report, we had a total of 33, 3,348 calls for the month, 230 of those, one of those were EMS, 268 were fire and rescue. The, let's see here, Dade County Sheriff's Office was 1,013, Trenton Police Department was 1799, and Georgia State Patrol, 37, total, so. So all that's a total of 3348 for the, for last month. That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Hartline?
At the sports complex, we've got rec football going on, it started, I think, last week. Next week, we got rec softball starting. Also, within the next month, we've got co-ed slow pitch softball starting. I'd say they're probably going to hunt people to sign up for that. Stacy felt bad for me because Amara was out doing us all the videos and stuff, so I think we have a video to show tonight, and senior from the high school, Josie Biddle, she done it for us and received community credit for the video. This is part of us trying to help market the sports complex for tournaments. We've got, she had some sand with it, but we're working on getting the copyrights to put along with this video to show what we've got going on down at the parks.
Carrie was going to say, but she elected out of this.
She can- I was, and I wish you guys could hear it with the music. We can't play the music because of YouTube, because we're live streaming to YouTube, they'll turn it off, but it was Josie Biddle who did this, didn't it? So wonderful, wonderfully talented high school student did this for us, and she was very gracious about it, very nice.
It's really good with the music going with it, it's, Stacy, also, we've added, you say, 100, how much mulch did we put in?
We put 100 cubic yards out.
And the mulch, we have to get certified mulch, so we can't buy it local, we have to buy it from the people that is certified for a playground.
And you see that the book donation box is close to this senior center? My grand, I was down there with my grandkids, and there was nothing doing but have a couple of books, so we had to go back and put some in there, back in there, it's a trade-out type thing.
And one other thing that I've got is, I guess, people that live on Sam Mountain or in my district, they noticed that the state is paving Highway 136, and they've got one of the lanes paved almost down to the bottom of the mountain now, so I think they're going Highway 2, Highway 11 to the red line.
That's all I have. Yeah, thank you, that's a good report. Ms. Bradford?
Well, I don't have as much as everybody else, so-
You can get on the paper next time.
I, I've been in class and working on this ordinance so much, I think I've stuck my head too much into that, but I do want to share, because I know I've had lots of emails about the transfer station with being out of a different county and making that clear, that if you do see a license plate from another county, they are allowed to come, they do have to pay and go on the wait station and go, go that route. So you, it is possible that you see other counties, but they are supposed to be paying to bring their trash, so that's all I have.
Well, I did not turn to the page that I usually report on, the Splotch. I do know Splotch was up about $6,000 over last month, that in itself is a good thing. And there's been a lot going on now. Reference made to Mr. Lowery here and his escapage on the paper, Philip, the difference was, you were able to get up in the morning after that was made, and- and, uh, Lamar had to call for backup, but, uh-
I had to roll out on the floor and get the Bengay out.
If, if you did not see that, he took a, he took a ride on the paving machine the other day and because he took a ride on the paving machine, Morganville Ridge Road was paved in one day. And so he, he told him, nope, no brakes, I don't get one, nobody gets one, and he worked those four, but they did, they did, they worked till about, what, eight-thirty Lamar, before they finished. And that road looks good. I don't know that they got it, uh, strapped.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's striding open.
It is, so it's open for business and it was way before schedule. And that being said, I will give those, and I did this yesterday at one of our meetings, I give those guys, he's down to about s- n- nine employees of four?
Four or five today.
Yeah, four or five.
That's counting Billy and his name.
That's counting the, the superintendent on it.
Five, five of them total.
And, you know, we say this all, and Billy gets mentioned a lot, Billy will tell you it's not Billy, it's these guys. And what you see done on the road, whether it's the mowing, uh, a much, much, much of the work done on, uh, County Road Six up on San Mountain, as well as Morganville Road, Morganville Ridge, required a lot of work, a lot of concrete, a lot of steel tying, a lot of framing to pour the concrete, a lot of drilling. Now, they didn't drill the holes, but they were there through every step of the process and one thing that stands out in my mind, uh, Phillip talked about G-Dot doing one thirty-six, when they came up to look at that, they went on up and looked at County Road Six and they looked like a cat that had just seen the door for the first time. And they said, y'all did this in-house? They couldn't believe it, that our little road department had done all that work, uh, and that only saves us. I mean, you know, saves the taxpayers a lot of money and they do wonderful work. If you see any of those guys, uh, you may not know who they are, but if you see them out somewhere and they're in a, they're doing a, you know, working, give them a high-five or toot the horn and give them a thumbs up because they work. That pavement yesterday, or day before yesterday, was about, I think it's four hundred degrees and that was a hundred degrees up here and four hundred down here, meeting Lamar in the middle and, uh-
Yeah, those, those little guys started at seven-thirty, they're not, they're men, they're young men.
Eleven or twelve hours.
Yeah, yeah, they were started at seven-thirty and quit at eight-thirty without stopping, eating sandwiches while the trucks were backing, backing and in and out.
They do very well. All right, so, uh, I will not attempt to give, uh, anything Chairman Rumley's has been involved with. I know that he is day-to-day operations person, uh, and it's caused from anything to, you know, um, I will say we did have two of our hearings that we mentioned yesterday, uh, concerning the millage, millage rate, uh, the acceptance of growth, whatever we want to call it and look at it, there's one left. Uh, the good thing about those, it did spur some questions, uh, to Carrie as we go through it. So that's good, it gives us the time, you know, Phillip just mentioned something, I think that somebody had wondered, why do we go somewhere and buy mulch to go on kids' playground? Why don't we just get it, you know, city, they mulch bushes, why don't, well, they may have also mulched wire and nails and a can or two in it or whatever, might have been in what they picked up. And you don't want little Tommy and Sally sliding off that slide onto it. So you learn a lot of things by asking those questions, uh, and so we do appreciate those that, that took time to send in, uh, questions and comments on that, but, uh, keep in mind the dates that are still ahead before this is done, as well as the one where we will meet with the school system when theirs is all complete, uh, and, uh, they will bring their millage rate for us to accept it in as much as we will collect it for them, uh, for a fee from the school system. All right, anything else before we go on? Then we will, uh, ask our folk appearances to come up. We have, uh, do we have anybody from the library? I don't think Marciana's, oh, she's not here.
We do not have anybody from the library, but they did ask me to announce something on their behalf. They are hiring, uh, right now for a youth educator coordinator, youth education coordinator, and that is a part-time job here in the Dade County Library.
All right. And also, Alex, do you still, uh, you don't? Well, good, good, I think. So, uh, all right, thank you for bringing that to, for them. Uh, Ms. Sarah Dyer with the UGA Extension in Dade County.
She always outdoes me and Phillip with videos.
Oh, well, I've got a good team and lots of help too, so have to give credit to them. But, um, I ha- also have news, um, as far as our department, we are hiring, so I'm not sure if all of you guys know that, but, um, Ms. Allison Henderson, um, has reached her tenures to retire and so she has decided to step back from that position, so we do have that position open. Um, I did want to throw some details on the screen, um, just of what the expectations are for that job for anyone that might be watching at home or in this room that might be interested, but this is the main role in our office that works with the youth of Dade County. Um, so we really need someone who's passionate about, uh, working with those youth in our community, hosting in-school and after-school programs, judging teams, summer camp, all the fun kid stuff. So, um, that position is not posted online yet, it will go through the University of Georgia's, um, site, so once it is available there, we'll pass that to Dade County and it can get on, um, the Dade County website as well, but they are the ones that, uh, will manage the application process, so the application will be open through UGA's site soon, we hope. Um, there is a long process to send it up the chain and back down to us to get it opened. Um, but stay tuned for that, we'll also share it on our Facebook page and in media outlets we have availability to, um, to let everyone know that that is open, um, for applications. Prior to, uh, Ms. Allison leaving, we did have some awesome summer camps that she hosted, so there was an outdoor, uh, four-H camp, this was for fourth through twelfth graders. Um, these students were able to do things like a nature walk, um, tree identification, learn how to tie ropes outdoors, um, and then unfortunately it was raining a little bit, so we had to bring them inside. And then we also had a really good turnout for our first ever week-long cloverleaf summer day camp, so these were four full, this was four full days. Um, every morning of each day, the students went on a field trip, so they went to the Chattanooga Zoo, um, to the McWayne Science Center, Cloudland Canyon, different things that they could do, and then they came back to the office and did lots of hands-on, um, activities and fun stuff at the Ag Center for that. So stay tuned for next summer because, um, hopefully we'll be back to the statewide four-H camps and going and traveling out of the county for those with a group, but we'll still hopefully host something like this for, um, anyone to join in, in town. The livestock show team did have a really busy month, so we traveled to three different shows across the state of Georgia. Uh, we went to Perry, we went over to Jefferson and Jackson County and in Gordon County and Calhoun. So those students, as you can see from these pictures, um, anytime you see a student, um, in the, what we call the backdrop or in front of the back of the, um, banner per se, that's host, of the host show, with the judge holding some sort of prize, that's a really good sign. Um, so that's a huge accomplishment for our four-Hers, we're really proud of them and having that Dade County representation across the state as they travel to these shows. Next week, we will be headed down all the way to Moultrie, Georgia for the next show. The day grass class is in full swing, so the third meeting of this new series, um, will be in August, so any of the registrants watching online, uh, be sure you mark your calendars for Monday, um, August twenty-third. Normally we have meetings on Tuesday, so please note that change. The next Tri-State Cattlemen's Association meeting will be at a, a farm, it'll be an on-farm meeting, that'll be at TJB Gelvi down in Chickamauga. Um, you can call our office to RSVP if you would like to partake in the meal, but you're also, um, able to decide that day that you'd like to join and just show up at six o'clock. Um, if you follow the our Facebook page, um, Dade County UGA Extension, or if you follow the Tri-State Cattlemen's Association Facebook page, the address will be shown on there, so you can travel to it. The next Beekeepers Association meeting will not be at our office, um, instead they will be meeting at Derek Forrester's, uh, Forrester Apary, um, so the address is on the screen for that, that will also be posted on our Facebook page. Are there any questions?
Did we find, get to use our van?
Yes, the students loved the van, they had a great time, they got to travel in it all week long.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just gonna ask, did you get the kids out front of the train on number five?
Kept them out of the way.
It looked like they were standing in the middle of the track, knowing coming, to protect you, I'm sure. Good report, thank you, Sarah. All right, next we have Ms. Audrey Clark for the Historic Preservation. You are, you are Audrey Clark.
Yeah, I am.
And you're on the agenda.
I am. Okay.
I did, I did. Dawn did that.
Somebody, somebody out there spoofing.
Somebody's in trouble. Uh, actually, a couple of things to report. Our last meeting a couple of weeks ago was quite an informative meeting and luckily, Commissioner Lowry, Commissioner Rumley were, was there as well. We had a meeting with, um, the architect who has drawn up the plans for the rooms, actually for the whole courthouse. We have, uh, dimensions and all of that, which is something that we've been needing, um, to, what's the word, where they have to get bids on that kind of thing, so we'll know approximately what kind of material, how much material, the cost of some of these things. Um, also, a contractor who has done some work for us that came in and shored up the top, the rafters and all that, whom we found out that it was about to collapse. Um, it was worse than what they thought when they actually got in there. All of that's been handled, taken care of and shored up, so luckily that was found before anything else took place. Uh, so now we can start and, and know that it's not going to fall in on us or be like the old jail and know it was condemned and then they had dynamite it. Well, I don't think that's about to happen, but, or would have happened over there. But this meeting allowed us and got us to a point where we've been working toward, that hopefully now we'll be making some larger steps. But with so many things going on and so much to consider with that building and getting it operational for our whole community to be utilized in all kinds of ways, we felt that that was a very large step and our next meeting, we should have some absolute numbers as far as materials or what will be done and when we can, we will present those blueprints or the drawings that has been worked up, um, so that our community can see what is in mind. Initially, our hope is to have the building utilized, once again, have some offices in there, have an area for our tourism and chamber office to be centrally located and there's hopes and plans of the upstairs area being utilized to host all kinds of events, receptions, teas, a community play, on and on, so that it will be available and be utilized and can be a benefit to everybody in our county and that we can still maintain something that represents this area. And I think most people will agree that the square, the old courthouse, is one of those pillar posts and has remained a pillar post of this town. And generally even giving directions for Trenton, we'll go to the square and go, you know, from there. So, excuse me, we are moving along and we also had another person to sponsor one of the big windows, um, that's all been replaced and if anyone is interested, I think we're, we may have a dozen perhaps left, if that many, if anybody is interested in doing that, what we intend to do is have a small plaque under the windows that will be in memory of, in honor of, or simply to do or recognize a family, whatever you want to put on there, as long as it's acceptable publicly, you know what I'm saying? So if you're interested in that, please you can give me a call or Dawn a call, Donna Street a call, um, Carrie knows how to get in touch with us and hopefully, uh, we'll have more information now as we go along because we're getting some things solid, not the floor yet, but plans and moving forward. Any questions? I hope not. I'm just kidding. All right, thank you.
Great, yeah. I'm just glad you didn't know you were on the agenda, you might have had something to say. All right, uh, Mr. George Williams? Brace yourself after that. Alliance for Dade.
Seems like I've been doing presentations all day.
You have.
Uh, thank you for having me, uh, the Welcome Center, I'd like to report, I don't have any videos, I, I need to get with you guys and figure out how I do that, or Sarah, one of the two, so anyhow, but, uh, we had sixty visitors last month, uh, each month it's going up a little bit, uh, and not all of those are visitors, there are actually, uh, about a dozen of them are local folks that are taking advantage of, of coming to our Welcome Center. Just yesterday, we hit seventy-five investors, uh, so we're pushing for our next level, which is a hundred, and, uh, that's gonna, that's gonna be an important plateau or an important next hurdle. Uh, we had a lunch and learn today, which many of you were at, and thank you for being there. Uh, I think it was very successful, we had fifty-two people there, we heard David Carroll and, uh, he's a very interesting guy, uh, had a lot of good stories to tell, uh, and, and he's very funny as well, so, uh, we, and we did learn a few things today since we call it lunch and learn. We're currently working on and reviewing, uh, how we can assist with hiring and workforce development in Dade County. Uh, that is a big need, uh, that we have, not only right now to hire people, I just heard two needs here in the last five minutes, uh, but many of our businesses are in need of people, so we're trying to figure out how we, how we work ourselves into that. Um, and last but not least, I'd like to thank the commission for the money that we, uh, are going to receive this next year and for approving the agreement, uh, between the two of us, so if there's any questions, be glad to answer those.
Thank you for what you do.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for lunch.
Hey, you're welcome.
I didn't agree with you about that.
Uh, next we have Mr. Williams back, I don't like Williams here, uh, so, no one else on their appearances, so we will now do our financial reports and I'll ask our, uh, finance director and clerk to please use our monthly financials.
All right, as of July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, the general fund had a balance of one million, nine hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars in investments, uh, for the general fund, we have one million, three hundred, two thousand, four hundred ninety-four dollars. Federal asset fund, US Treasury has a balance of zero, share special fund, eight thousand, one hundred dollars. Drug abuse education fund, forty-eight thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars. Supplemental juvenile services fund, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars. Victim assistance fund, eight hundred fifty-one dollars. Jail fund, four thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars. Federal assistance, uh, federal asset fund, Department of Justice, zero, uh, flexible, employees' flexible spending account, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred forty-two dollars, and payroll account has a balance of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars. And the, uh, Splotch account, two thousand fifteen, Splotch Funds Projects account, we have thirty-eight thousand, three hundred six dollars, and then the Splotch General Obligation Sales Tax Bond Debt Services account, we have a balance of seven hundred, eleven thousand, three, thirty-one dollars. Uh, looking at the, uh, income statement for the month, we, for the actual, this is as of June thirtieth, so we'll review this today, we will also have a June thirtieth statement next month, it's just that, just that time of year, so by next month, we should have wrapped up our sixty-day period for the audit, in preparation for the audit, and, uh, so we'll probably have another six-thirty, um, general fund income statement and expense report, just to review. But for the month of, so far, we've collected one million, seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred fourteen dollars and fifty-one cents, uh, we budgeted one million, three hundred forty-five thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars. That was, um, short two hundred sixty-six thousand, seven hundred fifty-four dollars. Year to date, we budgeted fourteen million, I'm sorry, we, um, collected fourteen million, two hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred seventy-eight dollars, and year to date, budget was twelve million, five hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, and that's a difference of one million, six hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred seventy-eight dollars. And so let me just stop right there and tell you, I wish that was the case, but the, uh, ARP funding that came in is still in this account, the new account has been set up and, uh, we'll be moving out about one point five million of that, so still in good shape there, but it's not quite that good. Um, as of six-thirty, looking at expenses, we've spent one million, two hundred fifty-six thousand, two hundred eighteen dollars, and monthly budget was one million- one million four hundred fourteen thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars. So we were, we, we were under budget, one hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars. Year-to-date, expenses were twelve million four hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred ten dollars. Budgeted twelve million five hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. So we were under budget, one hundred and fifty-three thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars. And that is at ninety-eight point seven eight percent. Local Option Sales Tax collected for the month was two hundred eleven thousand fifty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. And then special purpose local option sales tax was two hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and sixty cents, um, which is, uh, still great. We consider anything above two hundred twenty a win. So a two hundred sixty-three is a great number to exceed. Um, two thousand fifteen SPOLOST, you have that tracking worksheet there for your review. And then the following that, we have the collection for the Tax Commissioner. And so far, the, uh, year-to-date collections are at four million eight hundred sixty-two thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars. And that runs, um, that's a complete year for her, July one through June thirty, two thousand twenty-one. And that's one of the budget amendments we did tonight. It's not reflected in that. So it's gonna be right at a hundred percent or ninety-nine percent. But she actually will continue. There's a five-year period, just so you know, for the Tax Commissioner's Office that they collect, continue to collect taxes in arrears with interest and penalties. So in time, that number will exceed a hundred percent. That concludes the report.
You want to have a question? I have, I have something, Dawn. I'd like, you, you, you went past it, the AR, ARP money?
Yeah.
And I know we all, or most everybody should know what it, but you did mention, well, you say just a little bit about, of course, that the American Recovery Plan, the amount, and that it did have to go in another account.
Yeah, so when we first, well, we, we did, um, we found out on a Monday that the money was coming on Wednesday. So there was not time to, in, you know, open an account considering the banks are closed on Wednesday. So we finally did that, uh, recently and got the money. The money was, was placed in the, uh, General Fund, but at first, we were told the General Fund was sufficient, but then later they decided, nope, probably want to put that in a separate account, which is fine with us. So, um, that is money that's coming from the federal government for, um, the American Rescue Plan Act that was passed and approved back in March. I think it was, was it March or January? I forgot. But anyway, so, um, we got the money back in May. No money has been spent as of yet. Um, there are some clear directions that we can take, uh, you know, of all things. H, it, it needs to be related to COVID, of course, COVID-nineteen, but HVACs, for instance, because you have the circulation of air, uh, broadband ready, or broadband expansion in a community, for instance. Uh, I'm just doing this from my memory, but there's, there's about five different things at the top of the list that they, are pretty clear. You can spend it however, but basically, if you can justify it and, and tie it back to COVID-nineteen, which we can pretty much tie almost everything in life back to COVID-nineteen right now, uh, there is a, a way to, to do that. Some counties are spending it in unique ways that typically governments can't do and that, and, and in, in the form of, you know, direct grants to locals, organizations, and others are giving it to their employees. Um, so far, we have not spent a penny. And, but we, we, we have not ignored it. We just know that it's there and was really just awaiting a little bit more direction, uh, as the appropriateness as to how to spend the funds. And, uh, 'cause anything that we can do to help all of Dade County, that's what we want to do.
Alright, thank you, Dawn. Just start to, start the clarification of the money did come in and we're, you'll be hearing a lot about it, I'm sure, over the next month. Any other questions? If not, uh, if there are no questions pertaining to the report, uh, I will entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented by our clerk.
Make the motion to approve the financial report.
Motion's made. Second?
Make a second.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Lowry.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Vice Chair votes yes, and our Chair is absent. Alright, now we will, uh, have to get over here. Uh, Mr. Rogers, our county attorney. Mr. Rogers, that sounds familiar. No Twitter.
Have no legal matters to report, Chairman.
Uh, is there any unfinished business? One that at least I know of. Uh, the reading of the minutes, the last month's regular meeting and any special call meetings will not be required since all Commissioners have been furnished copies in advance. The minutes are public record and available for review in the County Commission Office. The minutes are included in the current consent agenda and will be considered for approval under new business. I'll now ask the County Clerk, Mr. Townend, to read aloud the items for consideration of consent agenda for this evening's meeting.
I have the approval of the agenda as presented, approval of the previous meeting minutes, review of the personal status report. Uh, the, uh, Purple Heart Day, um, for the American Legion Post, uh, for a proclamation effective August the seventh. Resolution R dash twenty-three dash twenty-one, which is Amendment Number Three to the Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-One Budget. Resolution R dash fifty, uh, twenty-five dash twenty-one, which is Agreement with the Alliance for Dade County, uh, the Chamber of Commerce. And Resolution R dash twenty-eight dash twenty-one, which is the review and approval of the Title VI Plan for Public Transportation.
Is that it? Okay, thank you, Dawn. Alright, uh, any questions concerning the reading of the consent agenda? If there are none, I need a, uh, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I make a motion to approve as read.
Uh, second?
I'll second, ma'am.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Roll call, Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Vice Chair votes yes, and the Chair is absent. Alright, thank you very much. Now we, uh, will have citizens' participation. Uh, is there anyone present who would like to come up and, uh, you have about three or, three or four minutes and, uh, tell us who you are and what you want to talk about.
Hi, my name's Cersei Talbot. Um, about a year ago, I approached the Commission during citizens' participation and, and pointed out that we have a process, um, about our presentation of documents. How it was working was, uh, during the workshop, the Commission would present a document, y'all would talk about it, um, and then you would enter into the meeting and then you would vote on it. And then at the end of the meeting, you would say, citizens' participation. And, um, when I presented it to you, I asked you if you would consider, um, providing for a, um, citizen comment time at the end of the workshop. Because the way it was working was, here it is, here's what we've got to say about it. Now we're voting on it. How do y'all feel about it? And it sort of was, um, there was a disconnect there. So, um, last year, uh, thank you Commissioner Hartline for bringing that to the table last year. You discussed it during the month of July, and then you discussed it again during the month of August. And at the end of the discussion, you, um, uh, I believe it was kind of put towns in, so that there were some guidelines that had been sort of drawn up for the Commission to pen and ink. And that's where it left off. Um, I noticed last month, we had the repeat. You presented an ordinance, you all had your discussion, and then you made a motion to vote, and then you offered citizens' participation. So, um, it's happened again. I noticed during the workshop that there seemed to be a bit of chaos about when it was appropriate for citizens to speak. Um, and as it ended up, I observed people just having to interrupt to be heard. Um, I believe that this is an idea of offering something at the end of the workshop could help alleviate some of that. And I'm asking the Commission if you would be willing to pick that rock back up and push it forward.
We've been doing it, but Robert just, he's new at this.
I beg your pardon?
We've been doing it. Ben has opened it up, uh, and, and.
Well, I never see on the agenda a place that is dedicated for the citizens to comment at the end of the workshop on anything pertaining to what was discussed. Um, and since it's not formalized.
Yeah, I wrote it down.
Are we gonna have guidelines? What are we gonna do? So my request tonight is, or what I'm asking is if this board is willing to pick that rock back up, clearly outline some guidelines, um, and then make sure that it's on the agenda so people can see. My turn to speak on this matter is right here. Um, I think that might be helpful. I appreciate you, um, considering that. Is this something that we can maybe work on?
Yeah, well, we, I have picked that up already, and, um, I've come up with, uh, several different plans. Um, so, uh, it has not been presented to, to anybody else yet because I just wanted to make sure that I was going in the right direction.
I really appreciate that. Um, I look forward to hearing about it and, um, seeing that it goes forward. Thank you.
So in some comments or from, you know, the, the people is definitely where, where I'm going for, because I agree. I think that there should be, um, definitely a time for them to speak and that's, um, where we get our information and make our choices. So.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And that, it, I have no problem with putting that on the agenda, 'cause we do over, we've overlooked it before. So if it's on the agenda, that might make it clear, but.
In regards to last month, there wasn't nobody here.
I'm sorry?
In regards to last month's meeting, there wasn't nobody present to speak.
Sure, I get it. But, but the opportunity should be there.
Well, I think there should be some procedures. I think there definitely should be some, um, rules and regulations, uh, not only to protect, uh, the board, but also to protect the people and, and give them the opportunity to speak. So.
Great. I look forward to seeing what you put together. Thank you.
There, there are rules that we follow. We try to go by Robert's Rules of Order, which is most meetings, that's what you go by. Well, I certainly don't have a problem with putting that, doesn't it? To, to overlook it is easy to do, and I'm sorry for that, 'cause Chairman Rumley has called for it several times, even though not in black and white. So if you can put that on there, so it is something we have to look at and.
We'll have to amend your rules. We do actually have a rule, but you've never amended it. I did provide something, as Mrs. Talbot said, to our last year, but it was never picked up or voted upon.
Well, thank you for bringing it back to our attention, Lee Will.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Now that was something in that we would need to put on the agenda to, to change that?
I, I think so.
For next month. Okay. Or not just next month, but going.
Just a rule of order.
Well, it, it depends on what it looks like, about whether we need formally adopt or whether we can just amend the way we, our procedure. But we, we'll take a look at and see.
I think basically what Ms. Talbot is, is, is looking at is doing in the work session what we do in, right now, what we're doing now in citizen participation. Yeah, okay. Anyone else want to come up and, uh, address this, Commissioner? Good shirt, by the way.
Yeah, go, Dawn.
Only the best. I'm Tim Easter. I am Chairman of the Board of Assessors with the Tax Assessor's Office. Just wanted to reiterate that we're still looking for someone to fill, uh, District Four seat, which was left vacant last December. Because that position is vacant and because of COVID and the reduction in classes offered by the Department of Revenue, uh, I am now out of compliance. Therefore, I cannot vote, so the Vice Chair has to take over. Being short of member, being, because I'm out of compliance, we only have three members who can vote right now. That's our quorum. If one of those members cannot make a meeting, and we've had this happen twice already this year, we cannot have a meeting. And, uh, sometimes we can shift things to the next month and, and that's alright. But, uh, we try to meet as often as we have the business to meet. Uh, fortunately, uh, they have sped up some classes recently, so, you know, hopefully I'll be back in compliance in a couple of weeks. If you were to appoint another member immediately, it would probably take three to six months to get that person in class to bring them into compliance. So it's not a fast process, and I understand that. Just wanted to make you aware that we really need, uh, this other member. And it's, it's very difficult to find people that are willing to serve in that.
It is, yes.
Any questions?
Did you, are you still on the board and you want to remain on the board?
I am still on the board.
Okay.
But because I'm not in compliance, I cannot vote.
You've not been able to go back to the.
Haven't been able to take.
I mean, how often is that, Mr.?
Oh, okay. But, so you're saying we have a vacancy? Do we have a vacancy currently on that board?
Yes.
Who resigned?
District Four, Ja, uh, Jamie Blevins resigned in December.
I thought we reappointed someone. Go ahead. We're looking at the minutes.
I don't, some reasons.
I was not aware of that either. Yeah.
That's, that's why I wanted to come and address the issue.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate the fact that you did.
Uh, with the classes, the classes were, uh, reduced because of COVID. They went to online classes. Now they're going back to in-person classes. And you have a curriculum, every two years, you must have forty hours of training. And you have a curriculum that you have to follow that. They just offered a waiver because of COVID that the class I'm fixing to take in two weeks is not in my curriculum. So they're, they're moving me up to take that so I can get in compliance. But we do have a vacancy, District Four.
Yeah, Tim took my place on the Assessors Board when I decided to run for the Commission Office. And that is something else everybody needs to try to do that one time. I'll tell you something. It is.
Thank you, Mr. Easter. And you have given some information. If anybody is hearing this, uh, you've heard Mr. Easter speak. If that is one board that when you are put on it, it's, classes are offered every so often, but you do have to go to a week-long class when you're put on that board. And then, uh, how often, every two years is it? Two years. Two years you have to go back? Because as we see every year, that is one thing in that office, it changes that in the tax office, it's sale for T A V T and everything, but especially the Assessors Office. It's hard to get somebody to serve on that, but I'm sure it's rewarding. I know Lamar's talked about the eye-opening part of it and, uh, reward. And, uh, so if anybody's listening and you'd be interested in serving on the Board of Assessors, then please let somebody here in the Commission Office know, uh, and we'll be glad to get with you because, um, it is probably that and water. You're just losing everybody.
I know.
We've been talking about that, haven't we?
Making me work, huh?
Alright, anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Easter. We'll bring that to our attention. And I don't remember it ever being mentioned as a vacancy. I guess it's just a ball that was dropped somewhere. I don't, I don't know. We'll find out if it's in the, in the minutes. I know that's what they're looking for. Uh, as far as I know, unless y'all do, we have no reason for an executive session.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Alright, that sounded like what we was about to do. Motion to adjourn, second?
I'll second.
Alright, now vote, Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Vice Chair votes yes, and the Chair is absent. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. Uh, be careful and enjoy the four hundred and fifty-mile yard sale that started today.